Use your mic.
Uh, Clarka Lingua, would you please call the meeting to order? Thank you.
Councilmember Will Coxon? Mayor Proton Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Somerville?
Present.
Mayor Richardson?
Present.
Councilmember Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Simmons?
Present.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Present.
With six present and one attending virtually, there is a call.
I'm going to excuse Mayor Proton Brown. Sure. Favor. Okay, thank you. Okay, agenda approval. Any corrections or additions? Anything want to be pulled off? A motion to accept?
I made a move to accept the motion as it is.
Is there a second? It's been moved and supported to accept the agenda as printed. All in favor? All right, next is public comment. Do we have any here for, anyone here for public comment? Please sign for the sign in sheet. Oh, thank you. Mr. Rajabi, is he here? Did you have comments, sir?
I do have.
Okay, who did he say that?
I left the country in 2010. I told Mr. Daniels that I wouldn't expect any certificate of occupancy until further notice. My daughter moved in in 2015 and the city took her to court saying that you're a tenant. And therefore, the building doesn't have a certificate of occupancy and you're in violation. Violation. My daughter moving into her own house and she's in violation. My daughter did not pay me a penny in rent. I did not receive a penny in rent. Why is the city so desperate for cash? So desperate that take people to court for nothing, for no reason at all? Seven hundred dollars in court costs. That is one court. The city inspector comes to my property and insists that the porch has to have a rail. For forty-five minutes, we argued back and forth, back and forth. He goes back to his office after one month. No apology is given. He says, yeah, you were right. No rail was needed. Why is the city, Mr. Myers, why are you treating me this way? What have I done to you? For five years, my house has been sitting vacant because you are not issuing certificate of occupancy for no reason at all. I walked in the neighborhood and I noticed that many, many houses in my neighborhood that were in the same situation, they had rails. You know why? Because they were just too afraid of the city inspectors to say that, no, my porch does not need a rail. I strongly believe that the city inspectors are stretching the city code. And the landlords are so scared of city inspectors because they're afraid that if they challenge the city inspectors, they're not going to get certificate of occupancy. That is not fair. That is not fair. The city inspector insisted that my property, a little normal, which I lost, should have a, the roof on the garage should be changed, the sidewalk should be torn apart and start all over. Go and check for yourself. Go and check for yourself. Somebody has, is the owner of that property. Why the roof on the garage has not been changed, Mr. Myers? That is discrimination. That is discrimination against me. Why isn't the sidewalk between the sidewalk, the driveway between the sidewalk and the street has not been totally changed as I was forced to or they were trying to force me to? Why are you doing this to me? If you're trying to force me to, I don't know. I talked about this to Mr., the attorney. And the attorney is saying that if a police officer is giving somebody a ticket, other drivers cannot say something like, I mean, the driver cannot say, how come you're not giving tickets to other drivers who are violating their speeding? Why, yes, or whatever, but you're giving me a ticket. Mr. Bar, if you're complaining, that was an orange, this is not the same thing.
Thank you, Mr. Rajabi.
Yeah, please use your microphone there. Please use your mic.
Being in front of me. Thank you, Mr. Rajabi. Appreciate you coming out on this call, knowing that. Thank you. Next on the agenda is our goal session with Dr. Morgan Milner.
Mayor, prior to doing that, is there any, anyone on the attendees list that would like to make comment at this time? If you would like to do so, please raise your hand and you'll have three minutes to address council. Seeing no hands raised, mayor, may proceed with the agenda. There is no other hands raised.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll go on with our goal setting. Dr. Milner, thank you for once again agreeing to be our facilitator for this session that we must have every year. And appreciate the fine job that you did last time and looking forward to working with you again this year. And with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, mayor. Counsel, it is so good to be here this evening. I'll tell you, even in the midst of the difficulties that we're facing with the pandemic, it's good to see that work is still getting done and needs are still being met. As we've done in the past, I'll facilitate this process of goal setting. It consists of two stages. The first stage, which is this evening, is an opportunity for council members and chiefs to express what their goals are and to provide some background and explanation. I understand that you've been asked to focus on your top three goals for the sake of time. And in that context, I will also ask that you limit your comments to five minutes for the sake of time. I think we have seventeen presentations today. It's quite a bit. So I'll try to keep things moving along, but to the extent that we focus on expediency, it will be best, I think, for the overall outcome. After introducing and providing detail on your top goals today, I then take that information in preparation for a consensus building activity that occurs in our second session. And during that activity, members of council are able to prioritize what goals they think they would like to pursue, and then we evaluate what outcomes come from there. So thank you all for allowing me to be there in this process. So we'll go in order. There's been an order that has been established by Mr. Hanga, and I will then follow that. And it begins with hearing from Mayor Richardson. So Mayor Richardson, I'm going to give it back to you. And if you can, just tell us about your top three goals.
Oh, wow. All of my top three. All of them, well, really, for all, for me, for, they all have a high close. I would maybe combine Reviving Copec and Neighborhood Associations along with improving communication lines between residents and citizens. That would be, I would move that to one. Increase county support for equitable resources to the city to commensurate with the needs that were identified in the opportunity index that they published a little bit earlier this year. I would like to see the city develop a DEI plan. If I can only have three at this time, those are my three.
Okay, thank you, mayor. The DEI plan, is that in addition to your, okay, good, I captured that. Okay, yeah. So I captured that you would combine the Revive Copec and also improve communication time between citizens, that you want to see increased county support for equitable resources, and that you would also like to see the city develop a DEI plan. Okay, and so just a point of note, when we go through our process next week, while your goals are all going to be in a major packet, so everybody can see what those goals are similar to this, we'll focus on those top three, but the other goals will be present so others can see what your priorities are. Okay, good.
Mayor, do the way to do it, I would have combined the rest of them in the third, in the one.
Thank you, mayor. Next in presentation is Mayor Proton.
Mayor Proton asked to yield her time. She said that her three goals are self-explanatory, and those might be the ones that she would like to address next week.
Okay, noted. Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, my top three would be in the area of safety and transportation. And I think they're, hopefully, they're pretty well laid up here.
Excellent. I have those noted. Councilmember Simmons?
So of the ones I submitted, I guess, for my top three, I could see, like to see us evaluate and implement improvements to our city water, city sewer, city water lines and other related infrastructure to meet the demands of climate change and harshly, you know, increasingly harsh weather events, and also it's an aging infrastructure. So I think that's incredibly important. This is really hard to pick three. I think also continue our investment in cultural and community offerings and partnerships to enhance access for citizens to the arts and new experiences and community building with new and innovative partnerships. And then, I'll just use the overall theme of increasing safety. Because I have several themes around that, from, you know, support for community policing philosophy to traffic calming measures and, you know, trying to see what we can do to reduce gun violence through innovative programs and partnerships. So just kind of overall, like, public safety, community safety enhancements.
Thank you, councilmember. Okay, councilmember Will Coxon? Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Yeah, taking this down to three is a difficult task, but here's a good one. My first one for public safety, the status of action versus response plan. For two years, we approved hiring with a social worker, and that hasn't happened. So I wanted to take that out of the paradigm that we approved it for and have that be reworked and social worker reports directly to the city manager. The second name would be the infrastructure in terms of continuing to work on removal of municipal ban. Both the engineering partnered with the Huron River Waterhead Council and with the public engagement. And that involves the member of city staff, including Mr. Jenkins and Mr. Cook. So buying that all into one thing, that's pretty much already done. I guess the other part of the infrastructure is, you know, coming up with a stormwater management plan. And that's further down, but that, I'm going to stick with that because, you know, that was devastating in the past year. And I'll leave it at that. Okay, thank you, councilmember. And Mr. Morgan is fine. Okay. Councilmember Morgan?
Thank you, thank you. As a preface, when it comes to retaining the best of those that apply and work here in the city of Atlanta, when it comes to tier, pay scales, and compensation, I think number two, creating a system-based program to retain the best of Atlanta's talent, as you know, we work at it. That we lose some of the best that we had in all fields because we just don't compensate enough. I would like to, when it comes to, this is more of a form because with the municipal government is a turnover, I would like to continue to highlight systems and programs that allow Atlanta to be fiscally responsible, more of the best practices type of template that people can learn and grow from. And last, I would like to seek methods and creative ways to provide density and affordable housing within the city of Atlanta. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Somerville?
Thank you. Mine are similar to Mayor Proton Brown's. I would like us to reopen our park bathrooms citywide and create an unarmed emergency response team through the fire department. And it wasn't listed under my, I only submitted two because they're kind of big balls. But I do kind of want to reiterate what Mayor Proton included in hers, which is to reinstate our parks and rap department, which has been on our council goal, has come out of our council goal setting priorities the last two years. So I would like to continue those conversations again this year. And sorry, all of these go into the general theme of improving opportunities for the community and related to safety with concerns with bathrooms. I feel it goes in line with overall improving opportunities and safe conditions for everyone in Atlanta, including people who are houseless.
Thank you, councilmember. We're moving along nicely. City manager McMullin, hi.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. The top three goals that I've chosen for tonight, although I have several goals that I continue to work on, some that have carried over from the last year, but I won't discuss those tonight. I'll just go ahead and get the immediate ones that I have. So the communications director is a part of my office as well. So I'll start with the goals that were identified for communications. And one of them was to identify and appropriate some other ways that we can share updates about boards and commissions and things that happen in those boards, do a summary, some kind of detailed summary on a monthly basis for the boards and commissions. Also, to increase participation within the community for public meetings. That means continuing with the hybrid mode, even though we may go back to normal at some point, but we'd like to expand the hybrid mode to allow more community involvement and attendance in our, in all of our meetings. And then, the other one was to get the community more involved in engagement opportunities via the internet or information outreach to them. These are goals that were developed by our communications manager, Tom. He is not at the meeting tonight, but because he is under my purview, I wanted to share those. From the city manager, I'd say my top three, number one is to develop Water Street. We have some plans going, but we need more progress, more progress in the way of signing a letter of intent with the developer. We need to push that forward. Number two would be implementing the compensation study that council approved. And one of the ways I'm looking at right now is updating all of the job descriptions and then adequately compensating, the outcome is to adequately compensate all of the employees by creating a wage scale. We have wage scales for new, for union, but creating a wage scale for non-union. And then I would say my third one would be, I did say that I wanted to upgrade the facilities, the DPS facilities. So a part of that would be for us to look at all of our city properties, the buildings that we own, and to see what needs to be upgraded, to do this on an annual basis, to see if there's some potential consolidation, even some disposition and some acquisition, just to see what we have and also upgrade what we have. And one of my number one focuses, that area is the DPS. They need a new locker room area. And I believe that when your surroundings are, are made better, then so is your work output as well as your morale. So I'll stick with those three for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So Clarka Lingua?
Good evening, council. My top three goals, starting with the 2022 election cycle. We will definitely be having an August and a November general this year for the gubernatorial election. YCS did vote last night. I was not able to find the outcome of that resolution, but most, more than likely, we'll be, we'll be having a May special election as well. With the changes in 2018, the budget allocation needed for election is much higher. So that will be, I'll need to come to council over the next couple of months with a budget adjustment in the voter registration account. And basically, with the increased absentee voters, we will need to hire temporary staff as we did during the November general and the August primary in order to meet the statutory regulations for getting out absentee ballots. So mostly, this will be just in, in terms of financial support. The second would be assisting advisory bodies to function properly in their role as determined by their enabling ordinance. This is a carryover goal from last year. I still hope to create some onboarding, onboarding videos that they could, that new members could take a look at, and those can be reviewed, trainings in OMA, FOIA, and parliamentary procedures. And then just basic, basic overall guidance in what the function of the body is. And then for my third goal, as I'm sure it's a goal of many departments, is record management. I would like to have perhaps one day out of the year that City Hall is close to the public to go through all of our files and destroy records that have surpassed the time of the guidelines of the Michigan State retention schedule. Make sure that we don't have duplicate records and make the records that we do need to be more easily accessible for the public in terms of, for.
Thank you. Chief Hoss?
Good evening. My first item would be hiring and retention. Hiring obviously is a problem. We've been trying to get this together for a while. The city has budgeted for twenty-one in suppression in the fire department for several years now. We briefly met that goal last year, but to lose someone who basically had to leave the position at a retirement, and I'm going to lose a person that we hired in February very soon to another department. So I guess I would call this hiring and retention. So based on that, hiring and retention has to be a priority in the fire department. My second one would be professional development. We're hiring younger firefighters and bringing them in. It's not as easy to get outside schooling now, especially with pandemic and things going on. We're going to have to look at doing more things creatively and inside the department. That means we have to bring instructors into the department for these trainings, and they can be costly. Part of this cost could be shared by our primary joint partners, but professional development, both the suppression and administration of the fire station has to be a priority. Well, I would say manager set, but the subject for DPS is for fire. Each year, I put something in there for building maintenance. I recently read an article that said the average life of a fire station in this country is fifty years old, and there's a billion dollars worth of need there in repairs and new stations and things like that. So what I do is I try to prioritize things in our station each year that need to be addressed. And so my third would be building and facility management.
Okay, thank you. Next is Police Chief DeGruisest.
I got you. Good evening, everyone. Much like Chief Hoss, two of the top goals we have are achieving full staffing. Your current budget for thirty-three, this is not local devices, staff shortage for police applicants. Something that we definitely need to work on this coming year as well as direct type of improvement and retention. I know throughout since the department currently looking at other opportunities. There's a lot of departments out there offering lateral transfer incentives, signing bonuses. The makeup of academies is changing. Where we usually have forty or fifty people in the academy, there are fewer select from as well. Slasgow Academy, seventy-five percent academy attendee, so it narrowed down the selection for departments that take only certified officers like we do, down to the twenty-five percent of the main campus. So we have to take a hard look at it. Like we were just talking about, a good goal for us and the chapter directly involved in this is exploring return, maybe with Fox groups, current, other park group. That needs regularly, some of the budgets for John Brown's very passionate about that comeback. Basically, nineteen and twenty nineteen, little down to basically the president, I meet him once a month, and no one else, so excited about that group at that point. And that group is, even with the COVID concerns, has literally gone to dozens of group. That's my feeling, but that's through Halloween, Thanksgiving, and Christmas holidays. That's my feeling, but that's through Halloween, Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays, because a lot of context on the public. When it's over, Park Ridge Community Center, et cetera. So we're really going to be looking at how to revive that. And it may take a different iteration than will be had in the past. There's things like websites, Facebook and a group called Next Door that are pretty much like online associations. So let me look like something of that nature. And my best, but not least, Imperial work from this year is completing direct camera update. Gold supply shortages and some cross customs, at this point, for researching for some grant funding that will be able to supplement where.
Okay, thank you, chief. Next we'll hear from the finance director.
Good evening, council and good evening, everybody. This is the goal for the finance department, payroll, treasury and assessing division. So we would like to train and cross street our staff. We've experienced some turnover in the department. And we'd like my employees to be able to handle different responsibilities just so we could avoid disruptions in cases of leaves or absences. We also like to implement a program software that will give access to employees and retirees with regards to their wage statements and pay stubs. They could access this online or mobile. Also like to improve our document record keeping. We've already started digitizing our records in the accounts payable and treasury division. And we would like to implement this in the assessing payroll as well. That's it for us.
Okay, good. Thank you. Department of Public Services, Mr. Akers.
Good evening, council. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. So our goals were this coming fiscal year are, first of all, our slurs is to implement our department strategy and work for the community. Some of the objectives, the way to do this all are with capital improvements, other options, additional preference solutions such as bike parking, handicap parking, lack of vehicle parking, preserve the active road debt by project and the westerners. And the last objective is to implement collections, globalization and total strategy and capacity against and expenses. The second goal I want to discuss is really completing our road crew projects at the road business of the house. We have several upcoming projects in the next few years that we want to smooth away and also we want to make sure that future years, these projects are on the timelines of the process. Highlights of them, we have 2022, 2023, MDA, West Way are doing a large scale road project at NRC Alton, Washington, Michigan. Road diet, reorientation and also some targeted improvements. We're also, MDA is also 2022, we are spending a four street, rerotation of four street bridge. Then 2023, where the construction of the drive between South and Ford, which is including a road diet, additional sidewalk and four side of the road. We also have kind of projects, and in 2024, the city also received grant dollars from that. Some credit for that, for backstreet, for a shared bridge model, which is about $600 million. We have no large number of projects that we want to perform. Additional objectives for this goal include improving transportation options safely with a focus on roads and by MDA. And we're looking at developing, implementing the local roads, payment reservation program in order to start making investments in our local road system, help slow deterioration. Last one I want to discuss is the goal to continue to find ways, always stand recycling options for the city. There are two main objectives with this. The first is regarding a developing a public outreach campaign regarding our recycling yard waste programs. We have a communication director on board who will help lead this effort along. The second program, second objective, highlight was we're looking at implementing a car-based recycling program. Evaluating the transition from weekly collection once every two weeks to the recycling yard. The city received a grant from People, we notified earlier this month, for $250,000 to purchase recycling cars for all households in the city. That fee represents about 80% of the total cost, we're working on retaining additional grants to cover that 20% we have. And our goal is to utilize the ones that the cards ordered. Some kind of next this year. Order cards are advanced scale containers, dry residents, horse race, the 25 that we all brings the current made up. Because of the expanded capacity, we believe that we have a good transition to become weekly once every two weeks. Now, this change will obviously do a few things. We are, one of the long-standing goals the council has had is to be able to incorporate additional equipment into our second program. We believe that making this transition will allow us, at our current staff, to quicker money. To have the nation also in your current program with the exception of
Mr. Akers, can you speak up just a little bit more, just like your microphone?
We're looking at making that change within a year of communication for sample. We're working on the specifics and analysis that you'll make sure to talk back to the board or council.
Thank you. Community and Economic Development, Mr. Myers.
Good evening, council. I had a breakdown of the top three. Obviously, the first one is one of the city managers, which is obviously we develop our long-term big insights, I think Water Street 220, North Park, and Armstrong on the agenda tonight, we have an update on 220 North Park, so we won't get into that right now. The second one, the city manager elaborated a little bit, but really reviewing our city facilities to see if there any are, are available for potential consolidation or disposition or acquisition. Kind of talked about a couple of things, so you should probably be somewhat aware of that, but those are things that are on the list. So you're kind of creating a comprehensive plan about that. And then third, these are not arranged in any sort of order, but really work to create an entrepreneurship force of that Park Ridge Community Center. We really find that through many years now, we've been trying to figure a way to pay for internships for students that end up sliding community schools. And so this is just another add-on to that piece of the hub, to hire people to develop knowledge and starting to know business and also working in the tech space. But we're working with a couple of partners on that. So I'd say if I take three of those, my top three.
Thank you. Human Resources, Mr. Fisher.
Good evening, everyone. I understand that change is never easy, but the one consistent thing in life is change. And I feel that it is, a change is needed in order to meet the needs and the desires of today's society. We have the ability to embark on new territory and embrace today's technology and innovative ways to minimize risk and exposure. We can no longer afford the overpriced commitments of our current providers. We need a system that is user-friendly, efficient, and that can add to our competitive edge. We need a system that gives our employees more control to view pay stubs, to view W2 options to punch in and out, all while using mobile apps. See, these are some of the features and reports that are available. However, we are not capitalizing on these opportunities to capture or to keep our employees engaged for the buy-in. Is, we have some of the hardest working employees in the city, and it's disheartening to lose good employees because we failed to give them the proper training or to provide them with the necessary tools and technology to advance their career. According to the Gallup report, employers with over 100 employees spend over $660,000 in turnover costs. This year, I want to focus on better recruiting strategies, changing managers on target selection, giving them the proper tools and training in order to interview the right candidate. And even when we found the right candidate, it is our duty to establish a career path that will increase trust and transparency. So my three goals this year is to come and create a better payroll and HRS system. Also to focus on retention and recruiting and to establish a career or succession plan. Thank you for my time this time.
Okay, thank you. Downtown Development Authority, Mr. Jacobs.
Good evening, council. Hope you can hear me. It's kind of tough hearing a lot of folks back here. My best shot here. Number one is going to be complete the sale of the Riverside Art Center. They've expressed an interest in paying off the remaining amount owed. And I would love to pay off our bond, which is up in a few years. That's another $85,000 a year for us, so that would be a big win. The next is to identify additional parking opportunities in Beppo Town and do the best in developing those sites. Looking forward to feasibility being completed, feasibility study, that being able to take action on that item, which is really important all around us while we're here at the trade house. And number three would be leveraging grant opportunities for building facade. We've had a lot of success leveraging state dollars for big transformative projects in historic buildings. And I want to continue building on that.
Okay, thank you. And our last presentation, we've been very effective in moving through the presentations, is City Attorney, Bar.
Good evening, everyone. My first goal is to continue to provide high-quality legal services to the city at a reasonable cost. My second goal is to continue digitizing our records and try to finish that up this next calendar year. My third goal is to reduce our paper use by at least 25%.
Okay, at this point, we've heard from the top three goals of all members here. Let me open it up for a couple of minutes for questions or clarification. Did anybody hear something in the goals that were expoused that they would like more information about or have some clarifying questions?
Are you, oh, yes, and this is for the HR director. And I couldn't always hear clearly what you were, were saying, but in reading your goals here, it says, you speak of retention, but then over on that line, it says decrease employee retention and increase company morale. Was that, should that have been increased employee retention?
Yes, ma'am. It is to increase company morale.
Okay, and we to increase retention and morale.
No, so you want, yes, yes, we want to decrease employee turnover, which is actually increasing retention and increasing company morale.
Okay, I thought that was, I thought that's what you, okay, thank you.
If there be no other questions, I said I will format these goals that have been expressed. And then next week, when we come together for session two, we'll engage in a consensus building activity where we can prioritize those goals. And the final package will be forwarded back to Mr. Helanga for prioritization from the city manager and subsequent pursuit. With that being said, thank you for this time, and I'd like to turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Milner, and thanks to all of the council people and Mr. Barr and also all of the department heads for presenting your goals. And I think we'll be anxiously awaiting to see what Dr. Milner brings back to us on our first meeting in February, and we will have an opportunity then also. But before we go on in the agenda, is everyone sure that they have no questions or comments about anything that was presented?
I have a comment. I just wanted to make sure that at our next meeting, we're able to come to a consensus, even if it's just a temporary one, so that we can meet our charter commitment to have adopted our goals by the first meeting in February. So I, the next meeting may have a lot of stuff in it, but it is at that point that we do need to adopt some goals to meet our charter.
Right. Thank you for that reminder. Yes. That's why I was asking again if anyone had anything that they wanted to question or discuss or add at this time.
There's a comment, more, it was a question toward the chiefs based on, I'm sorry, it was a question for the chiefs, in a sense, based on a reoccurring theme of retention and recruiting. Because it's clearly across the board that we're hearing these things. So it's a theme, a historic longstanding issue with retention. And I don't know how long it's been, but the question was, how long with this trend can we go before we become ineffective in what we're doing as a force, fire or police? But that's not something to be, that's something I'm asking myself as we're thinking about retention and finance and public services. And it looks like it's across the board. So I just think something that's, it's important, clearly, it's a reoccurring thing.
I think Councilmember Morgan, that one of the things we're going to have to do is look at our compensations. We talked about this a while ago as far as deciding what our philosophy will be. And it seems like it's apparent that the philosophy that we have at this point is, you know, it's kind of stable, but at this point, I think we need to look at comparatives and we're going to have to look at even signing bonuses, other things of that nature to make working for us more enticing or, you know, fa, more favorable. We're going to have to look at possibly the tuition reimbursement, those kinds of things. And those definitely have an impact on our budget. So I, I believe that in order for us to affect change in that area, we're going to definitely have to take a plunge. You know, we're going to have to do something different in our compensation scale.
So just as, as a maybe a starter piece to talk about, I know that a lot of the things that the newer officers are looking at, they're looking at other departments have to do with pension multipliers and retiree healthcare. I know those are some legacy costs that a lot of cities are looking at as burdensome. But the departments that are attracting a lot of employees from other places are offering those benefits.
Yeah, I will get on a mirror with what Tony says, plus not retaining employees is something that we haven't had to deal with for many, many years. I've been there for 36 years now, and then this is only occurred in like the last six to seven years where we're hiring people and they see other opportunities and they leave. When I started, it was career, you, your plan was to start and finish in one spot. Now there's departments that are, and I don't want to get into negotiations now, but we, we had seven steps and to get to a full pay, we eliminated step, we have, still have six. And I routinely have ad job applications with other departments come by my desk that it would take someone in our department four years to reach their starting pay. So yeah, they, it's easy to lure someone away.
And my final comment, it just appears that a lot of the best that we have are being kind of benevolent because other people would take them if they weren't so dedicated to it.
because other people would take them if they weren't so dedicated to F C. So, thank you.
F C's always been a place where if you could work there, yeah, they would try to recruit you, not so much in Fire, but I know police. But if you can work in F C, Mr. Barr said, you can go to work anywhere. People hire you.
So, so given everything that has been said about recruitment and retention, it's very important. It's important to me, and I know it's important to council and the community, to get the brightest and the best, and not just to get them, but to retain them. So if this rises to the top, and it is one of those that are listed as our, one of our goals, there will definitely be a budget impact. And I am hoping that council will seriously consider that, because this is what's going to drive the budget for that line item in both of those departments. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there, because we can list it, and we all agree upon it. And when budget time comes, you know, we can, sometimes we say, oh, you know, we want to scale back. But we all want to be in agreement that this is something that we're going to do, and you're going to trust staff to come up with the salaries and the numbers that will help us to deal with these issues and be successful. So I kind of wanted to say that, because I know when budget time comes, it looks different, you know, so, thank you.
Yeah, actually, along the same lines, I wonder if before we meet again, if we could, between Mr. Basavika and HR, have an idea of what our current turnover costs are, maybe for 2021, and perhaps five years before. And I think that'll help us, give us an idea of what we might stand to pick up if we're going to spend a little bit more on recruitment and retention. I don't know time-wise if that's too tall of an order, but I think it would be helpful.
I agree.
I definitely do agree as well. I'm more than happy to start pulling some reports together. Due to our current system, the way things are now, a lot of the reports that I will dig deep into and start creating to really track it will be manual. And that's why one of my biggest pushes is to have a better HRS system where it will automatically generate reports for us. The current system that we use right now is outdated. And, I mean, even we had a meeting with our current provider, I mean, even they said our reports suck. So, I mean, there's no way that we can get around it. So if we want to look at retention, we have to look at better software or systems in order to maintain the information. We can continue to provide different reports at your disposal, at council's disposal, even for department heads. If they need employee counts, or if they need, whatever it may be. It's really difficult using the current systems that we use right now.
But we will get together with Mr. Basavika and Mr. Fisher and try to come up with some preliminary numbers. Mr. Jones Chance, because we do need to have some kind of guide, so I do appreciate that request.
Any other questions or comments? Is everybody too cold to talk? Okay, seeing that, let's go on with the, with the agenda. Resolutions.
Council, the next section of the agenda is the consent agenda. Resolution number twenty-two-two-zero-one-five, resolved by the Council of the City of Ibsleyani, that the filing is be approved. Resolution number twenty-two-two-zero-one-six, approving the minutes of January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. Resolution number twenty-two-two-zero-one-seven, approving appointments and boards and commissions.
All in favor?
That would be a roll call, ma'am.
Consent is a roll call. Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor, sorry, Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons? Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolfaxson?
Yes.
With six yes and one absence, the motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Halanga, are the other resolutions here, or?
I just took them all, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Who had the support on consent agenda? Going on to the next section of the agenda. Resolution number twenty-two-two-zero-one-eight, approving agreement for legal service with Cameron Law. Is resolved by the Council of the City of Ibsleyani, that a power request and recommendation of the City Attorney, that the city manager is authorized to sign the retention agreement with Cameron Law for services incurred pending litigation in AMA City of Ibsleyani. Fees shall be billed monthly, and these are limited to twenty-five thousand without further counsel approval.
Is the move been supported? Are there any questions or discussions? Mr. Jones Chance?
Oh my gosh. Okay, so when's the, my question is, when's the next time we'll actually get an update on this one? Just curious, someone's contract will be hanging out, potentially.
So, this is the outside counsel that will be assisting us with our deja vu. No, I'm sorry, with our marijuana, I'm sorry, the AMA marijuana litigation. And originally, I could go ahead and sign the agreement, because twenty-five thousand is within my purview. However, learning from the last time, I wanted to bring this before council and get their blessing, and to also, to show that we are keeping them at a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand. And so when it gets to that point, because this is what we'll show them, if it goes beyond that point, or we get close, then we'll come back to council. And I'll seek further approval, or not, to continue the contract with them. So this is just to safeguard us, so that we don't end up with a big litigation bill that we did before with deja vu.
I think that sounds reasonable, but when is the next time we anticipate having updates on the matter itself?
Actually, at this point, we don't have any, but Mr. Barr, if you could answer that question?
Yes, certainly. At present time, the council will remember this has to do with social equity permits and marijuana costs. And the council, permits were appealed to city council, when council approved them. One of the permits that was approved is AMA. And they turned around and sued us, claiming that there was due process, substantial due process violations. And they wanted to have their permit transferred to a place that wasn't allowed, some other ideas, some other, they say that the city violates its own ordinance and some other areas. Until they filed the lawsuit, and we just filed a motion to dismiss. And I had helped with this firm in developing that motion. And that's scheduled for hearing on February twenty-fifth. In the meantime, the plaintiff filed a motion for injunction. And that is a question, they want the city not to enforce this part of the marijuana ordinance. We're ready now to carry a response to that, and then I'm going to state that for the hearing of that motion.
See your mic on. Are you wanting to say something?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I get the twenty-five thousand dollar trigger level. You know, I think I stare, Mr. Jones Chance's concern is about hearing about this on a regular basis, so that we're not surprised. I'd just like to hear from, from Mr. Barr or the city manager, McMullen, sort of the rationale for picking this one over, just a summary of that.
When I talked to the owner of the firm, we decided, we talked about fees. And he said their usual fee is four hundred and forty dollars an hour. I said, well, that was too rich for us, that's what they do for a hundred eighty, and they agreed to do that. And I expect that this would be a pretty reasonable rate.
Thank you. I would imagine that this particular law firm has special skills or a particular winning record when it comes to marijuana litigation. That's why they were sought out, correct?
Yes, this firm was very well respected, especially in the marijuana, they're the experts in marijuana law. And that's the reason that I'm asking that we get their expertise in this marijuana. At the present time, it's a little bit of a specialized area, want to make sure we're covering all the bases.
And where it says, again, to go from four, I mean, I guess that's, to go from four forty an hour to one eighty an hour, that's an arbitrary two-hundred-and-sixty bucks. So I don't know what they're doing, right? But it says here, they're billing by the hour. How much can you bill? Is it a point one hour? How much is that billable for?
Different firms bill in different manners, in different tax. But if you have a hundred and eighty dollars an hour, and you bill at ten, one tenth of an hour, then you're billing for eighteen dollars.
Okay, that's cool. And of course, I got the background check, so we won't have the lawyer. We did our vetting correctly. Mr. Barr, thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to make one comment.
Yes.
Just for transparency purposes, I just want to let everybody on council and the public know that I did recommend this firm, because I'm familiar with the work they do, so I just want to go on record. There's no financial issue, I'm not getting, you know, paid by them to recommend their services, I just know that they're good at what they do. So I just wanted to put that out there for transparency.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council, Mayor Proton, welcome. All right, seeing that, would you call the roll, Mr. Halanga, please?
Councilmember Somerville? Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons? Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolfaxson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Council, before reading the next resolution of the record, if you, in your motion, could you just announce your name so that I can record it correctly? Resolution number twenty-two-two-zero-one-nine, is resolved by the Council of the City of Ibsleyani, that an ordinance entitled an ordinance to allow ducks and drakes in the city to amend section fourteen-five of the Ibsleyani Street Code to allow ducks and drakes in the city to be approved at a second and final reading. Thank you.
It's been, Mr., you're good? It's been moved and supported. Any discussions or comments, questions? Okay, Mr. Wolfaxson?
And this is a formality, in the section under where it talks about permits, the words ducks and drakes have not been added to that, so let me, the very first part, section fourteen-five, any person who keeps hens, I want to amend that to say hens, ducks, or drakes. Not sure I got this far without that in there, but it doesn't change the meaning of this at all, but it's a record-keeping.
You said fourteen-point-five?
Fourteen-point-five A.
I'm having difficulty finding it. Which one? Okay. Okay, with that correction, anything, Mr. Morgan's your hand up.
I know it's going to be as a point of contention, are these flightless birds, like, well, can they fly, are they ducks? But will they be able to go, are they trained? Like, I just wanted to ask the question as a point of.
There's a provision in here for the ones that are flightless, and the ones that have, that can fly. So the ones that can fly need to have a cover over the top of their pen. The ones that can't fly can, like, walk around in the background, but they have fenced in.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. Thank you for the clarity of the drink.
Mr. Halanga?
Amendment that was offered by Councilmember Wolfaxson, is that a friendly amendment? And if so, does Councilmember Somerville agree to that friendly amendment?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Would you call a vote, can we call a vote on the amendment, please?
Mayor, that was a friendly amendment, no.
It was a friendly, okay, thank you. Well, if there's no other questions or discussion on this resolution, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons? Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolfaxson?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Carter? Okay, Mr. Halanga, next resolution, please.
Council, the next resolution is resolution number twenty-two-two-zero-two-zero, resolved by the Council of the City of Ibsleyani, where as the origin of black history once began in nineteen fifteen, half-century after the Thirteenth Amendment of Alice Swager in the United States. And whereas the same year, the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History was founded by historian Carter G. Woodson and Minister Jesse E. Moreland, that recognized achievement by Black Americans and other people of African descent. And whereas the Association initiated National Negro History Week in February nineteen twenty-six, eventually the week-long recognition led every president since nineteen seventy-six to designate the month of February as Black History Month. eventually, the week-long recognition led every president since nineteen seventy-six to designate the month of February as Black History Month. And whereas during the month of February, communities nationwide organized various events and celebrations to commemorate Black history. And now therefore, we have resolved that the city council of the city of Ypsilanti approves to hold a citywide observation for Black history. There will be a quarterly webinar that will discuss the history of blacks within the city of Ypsilanti.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Who made the motion?
Oh, sorry, so moved, Mayor Proton Brown.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any questions or discussion?
I have one. I have actually a comment and a motion I'd like to make. I know we talked about getting more details at our last meeting. I think I would like to move that we run the program, the the quarterly webinars through the city manager's office via our comms director and the historic preservationist that we hopefully replace soon. I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Could you? I'd like to move that we run the this program through the city manager's office via the comms director and the historic preservationist that we have in the city. I guess hopefully we'll have again. Or. Sorry, my motion was to run the program through the city manager's office via the comms director and the historic preservationist. If we have more clarity on what the, who's running the program, so it's. The motion was to run the program through the city manager's office via our communications director and our historic preservationist. Is that loud enough?
It's been moved and supported that whether that's the communications department, that is an amendment. Is this? Are you accepting that there's a separate amendment? Oh, what's my topic? It was, it was.
It was, this is just a separate amendment.
Yeah.
No, I wasn't, no, I wasn't asked. I was just asking. Yeah, right, okay. All right, would, uh. I'd rather not. This is a resolution that I'm bringing forward, and I'd rather vote on that amendment separately. If it's okay with the mover and the supporter.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to go to the amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is there a support for that amendment?
Yes, I have support of that.
Yes.
I guess in fact, I don't know if anybody has any, like, questions. I guess I just, for clarity, it would make sense if it's a citywide event to be run through our communications department.
Mr.
Yeah, was this intended to be a citywide event or is is this citywide sort of a technicality? I guess that's the question. And then what, you know, what does running it through the city manager and the communications director entail? What's what's different about it and what's the advantage? Just so that I understand.
Yeah, well, it says citywide quarterly webinar in the title. So I guess just for clarity, if city council sponsoring something, then it should be sponsored by the city. And it's being sponsored by the city as a poll. It should be run by the the person who has been hired to communicate things for the city and city council. And we also have a staff member for historic preservation that can coordinate with the university and other people who council suggests.
Would it not have been otherwise?
Well, otherwise, there was no clarification on who's running this quarterly citywide webinar.
Okay. And how are we, you know, given the subject matter? I I guess it's up to them to determine how it's presented and who's presenting it. That's what's, yeah, where's the involvement of? That's what I wanna know.
I don't know.
Are we just talking about using technology?
Yeah, I was assuming using the technology, using the marketing, using the spreading of the word, making sure it's being done by staffers. And, you know, making sure it gets out citywide. I don't, I don't have any details beyond that from what I was taking from the amendment.
Yeah, just making sure that that's our understanding.
Yeah, there just weren't any details in terms of that. So I just think that's important to be done through the main department that's supposed to.
So then who's responsible for the content?
Are you asking for the communications officer or director to be responsible for the content of the webinar?
So the the.
Or are you asking, or or are you asking that the communications director be responsible for setting up for the logistics of presenting the webinar?
So the motion was to run these programs through the city manager's office by way of the communications director and the historic preservationist that the city has. And they would coordinate with either people that any of us on council recommend. Otherwise, I mean, there's nothing in the the resolution that clarifies how this is gonna be run. So just for clarity and to make sure that everything's done and everybody on council has an opportunity to both participate and make recommendations. To me, it makes sense that it be run through the city manager and through these other channels that she oversees, which would be the communications director and our historic preservationist. Mr. Jones. I mean, aside from this, there's nothing that clarifies how this is gonna be run. Anyway, so I guess anyone on council can make recommendations on what would be displayed at these four quarterly events throughout the year. But I mean, is this just for twenty twenty-two? Is this for the rest of time in Ypsilanti? I mean, people, staff changes, people on council change. If we're gonna have this be run four times a year, there should be a structure to it that remains the same.
Okay, Mayor Proton.
Sorry, did you jump in? So, yeah, my assumption was I supported the amendment for ongoing, right? So that no matter what, it it funnels through the city manager's office. I think that from what I would think is that the group that has been working on this would be the ones providing the content, but allow for additional input if necessary, or if, you know, if I wanted to say, you know, see something, maybe I could reach out to the group and add that information, but not necessarily have the communications director create the agenda for the the conversations, just for to have a place to be, to live in that department where I think it it does belong, if it's gonna be community conversations. So if we can come to some type of consensus on that.
I guess, as far as I know, there's like one, there's a conversation with the mayor and other people so far. I would imagine that anyone on council could make recommendations for people who want to participate. I guess to help come up with like an agenda for these webinars. I'm not familiar with the, if there's a specific organization. But there are a few entities within the city through the university, for example, would be one, the Black History Department, through the archives at EMU. So there's lots of different opportunities. But I just think everybody on council should be able to make recommendations and have it run through staff. So I guess whatever is already maybe in the works would be something that staff would effectively run. I guess it just, it'd be nice to have some structure behind what we're supporting and saying is gonna happen four times a year.
So if I could.
Yeah. I think those two different things we're talking about. I think as we're having a discussion, I think, because it is, this, the specifics are not in here, but I think we're talking about the discussion would tell us the presentation part or how long it's gonna be, if it's longstanding, if it's quarterly, if it's gonna be for three years. I think that's the discussion. Now, the platform that is on and how it's gonna be relayed, I think those are two different things. I think the communications director and other things we have at our disposal and how we're gonna present it to the John Q. Public are totally different than the things that we're discussing now, like who's gonna be in charge of the presentation? Can we add to it? Where can, how can we follow up with what's being presented? And is this the credible platform that we're gonna get it off to the people? So what we, what are we on now? It's just the fact that it can exist open-ended without who, what, when, where. It's just telling us what we can do and for how long or the reasons we're doing it or who's involved. That's what we're talking about, I would imagine.
Right, I see it as, I see it as you do see that it is two different things. Mr. Helanga.
The city manager has a comment.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. McMullin.
Thank you. I appreciate this resolution coming forward and all the comments that I've heard so far. And I do believe that it's a good suggestion to have it run through the communications director and through my office for consistency. What we do at this point, when we're doing our newsletter or whatever, our communications director does send out an email to department heads, seeing if they have an article and saying the due date. This could be something, this could be done similar, like for the first quarter, saying, you know, we're shooting for this day. Does any council member have, you know, something pertinent that they'd like to see in this first webinar? And then work from there on the content. And then, when the second one comes up, do the same thing. But I think what it does is just gives direction and it gives consistency. And whoever is responsible for the content will 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 run it by the communications director. And we put the piece together together so that it is a nice webinar. And so I I think that would be a good way to approach it. I'm not suggesting that you follow that, but that was actually a very good recommendation. And so I myself and Tom would be willing to do that. We keep, that way we keep council abreast of the four dates and when the due dates are for the content. And then we're working together to make sure that it's done tastefully and professionally. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yeah, I think my my big concern here is I just want that we be sensitive to the community whose history we're supposed to be telling you and ensuring that that's who's in charge of the content. If the amendment, and this is why I'm trying to get clarity, is just for the purposes of communication and then coordinating, you know, coordinating dates and so forth, I think that's a good idea. I think that will provide some consistency. In terms of content, I do not believe everyone has an equal say in what the content is. This is not everyone's story. And so I just wanna be sure that if we're doing this, it is to enhance the event. You know, kind of tighten the ship a little bit and make sure that it's coordinated well, the timing works, everyone knows the date, things like that. In that case, I'm all for the amendment. I just wanna be sure that we are clear on what it is we are voting.
Okay, to follow up, I guess, yes, to what you just said about like for structural purposes, but also the way that the resolution reads right now, there's no detail as to how it's gonna run. So I guess for, I guess, other people on city council who are part of Black History in Ypsilanti, are, is everyone going to have the opportunity to submit ideas and participate in the same way as everybody else? Because there's nothing in the resolution that clarifies that.
Perhaps it might be a good idea then to, if it's possible, I don't know procedurally how to do this, to maybe table the amendment and then clean up the actual resolution a little bit, because it does seem to be lacking some specifics.
Are you making that a motion to table?
Sort of halfway asking the question of how procedurally to do that.
I would support that.
It's been supported.
Yes, we have an amendment. That's what I'm asking. We have an amendment on the floor.
Yes, there is an amendment on the floor. But if, what is the the intent of you wanna table the amendments and then amend the resolution?
Or at least discuss the resolution itself so that we can get some of those details in there.
You could withdraw the amendment and then restate it later in the in the meeting.
Okay, are you planning to table?
Um, I guess I'm looking for more feedback. I don't, does anybody else, like, if we voted on the resolution without the amendment, I guess it's just not really clear to me how that's actually gonna function.
I think my idea is that we discuss the resolution and maybe add some specifics, and then you can restate the amendment after.
Okay, I withdrew my amendment. And I'd like to add a comment.
I would entertain a motion to to amend, I mean, to table the amendment and the resolution. Is that good? Okay.
Yeah, I withdrew. I just have a comment in addition. So I just wanna be clear to something that Brian Jones Chance brought up. I don't, like, my intention isn't to say that we want to, like, whitewash this event. My goal would just be to have some structure around who can make recommendations and working with partners like the archives at EMU and the Black, the African American Studies Department. There's a lot of good research that exists in the city that has been done throughout the years that I think would be valuable. It's just not clear how this is being done. So I guess I want more clarity that we, if it's a city-sponsored, city council-approved event, that everybody on city council, in particular, Black city council members are all invested, being able to be invested and have the opportunity to participate equally. So no, I'm not. I'm just saying I would like everybody to have the same opportunity to structure the event as others.
So you withdrew your amendment? Did I hear correctly?
I withdrew my amendment. That was just a comment.
Are we wanting to discuss the resolution or are we wanting to table the resolution to take it back and have it reworked and bring it and present it again?
Attain a motion to table it. I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and second to table.
Do we get a specific date?
Yes, it must be to a specific date.
I make a motion to table it until the next council meeting.
Which would be.
Tableauing just means that it's it's automatically brought up at the next council meeting. If you were to postpone it to a date certain, that'd be different. But tableing it just means it will come back on the first.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Proton Brown.
Yeah, so I feel so confused now. But what Mr. Jones Chance was saying is along the lines that I was thinking that we were gonna have a discussion right now to talk about something, so we could be, it could be shared out by, you brought the resolution correct, Mayor, so we could share out what the plans were now, so we could discuss it. So we don't have to table it, and we could take care of this tonight possibly, rather than waiting until next council meeting, which will be in February. If, so if we can, if you know the details, is it not possible to share the details now and then we can make those corrections? If it's not, I'm okay with that. But I, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Jones Chance, I thought that was what your intention was, was for us to talk about it tonight.
Your, your light is on. You're lit up.
That there was some specific concerns, and so we could just bring those up with the name, as you know. And all that stuff, so we can put those in now. Then we can pump it out to the manager, which I think is a good idea. But let's discuss those little bits out. They don't seem to be very nice.
So when we say quarterly, is there any indication of when the quarterly, is it gonna start this Black History Month? Quarterly, that's what I'm saying. There's nothing to even determine when it was gonna start.
Would it help? Okay, would, what we, the motion to table is still on the on the floor. No, we haven't voted on the table. Would it help if we took out the the last line and we can discuss that, say, at the, we could vote on the, on the resolution without the quarterly webinar added? Because the original resolution was without that, but it was, there were a couple of suggestions that came from staff that quarterly would. Uh, there were a couple of suggestions that came from staff that quarterly would be good. So if we take out that. So that we can go ahead knowing that the first February is our next meeting and then we can discuss the, a whole quarter, the weapon. Quarterly aspect. At the next meeting.
So council, like, there's a motion to table on, on, on the table. This is, it's, this is non debatable. So you need to either withdraw the motion or vote to table the resolution.
Okay, all, well, all in favor of table and would you call the, call the roll on table? Okay, would you call the roll on the question? What was that, Mr. Morgan?
You think we would, I will draw the motion to table so we can discuss and get some clarity and finalization. I will draw the motion to table.
All right, I would like to suggest that we remove the last line, that there will be a quarterly webinar. That will discuss the history of blacks within the city of Ibsalanti and. Just go on the resolution that we would have a. But during the month of February, that we would have a recognition of Black History Month. And we can discuss the quarterly webinars at another time. Mayor Proten.
Okay, so I actually agree with that. My only question would be. The thing for me that is vague is who is doing this, who is running it? And I, that's why I supported the original amendment because I wanted to understand who would actually be running that conversation discussion, even if it's not quarterly.
Okay, for the, for the celebration, I think that council could come together. And if there are members of council that would like to work on a, an event together.
If we take out the quarterly webinars, we're discussing nationwide celebrations and events. There's nothing specific about what we're doing. It's just to take the quarterly webinars out, what are we doing besides recognition? What does that mean? Okay, and so, I mean, because there's some days, some holidays are observed and some are recognized and those are, some are celebrated, so I just.
The last year, Mr. Morgan, if I could answer you, last year, we did have. A, we had a, a program. It was, it was a virtual program. And this would be, in presenting this, it's certain in my mind was that we would have a program. Very similar to the MLK celebration that we just, just had. So that it would be similar that we would pull in. Members from the community that had many with firsthand. Experience and history in with what a black history was like in. Of the city of Ibsalanti and presented certainly the program and we would welcome the. Support of the communications director, but that we would draw that any council members would be able to feel free to. Put in, have input and we could even, you know. Bring, set up a committee from council to do it. I really did not think that this would take this long to. So.
I guess one more to go back to the motion that I originally made, I guess. My intent by like running this through the city manager's office to make sure that like there's one entity and I guess. Who's like chairing or like, I guess emceeing this, I, my preference would be that the city manager does, that way it's structured and that it's the same every time. But she kind of. Calls the session, I guess, you know, introduces everything, runs through the agenda and is fully participating throughout the whole thing. That way it's a reflection of. All of council and the city, if this is a city sponsored event. So I don't know if there's support for that, but I would like to see that happen. That way we have. That way it's more structured around the city. Okay, I guess my, I can make a different motion. I, I would like that the city manager is actually like. I guess the person responsible for chairing the event for all of council, that way there's. It's reflective of all of council in the city, since she is the city manager. I don't know, I guess, otherwise I don't understand, like, there's no consistency. So I guess without the detail, I'm looking for consistency, I guess. And right now there's just not detail on who's going to actually run the event. So that's, I guess, what I'm looking for.
Mr. Jones Chan.
Yeah, I think what some of us are maybe not wanting to say is I, I think the preference is that the cast and crew be black. And what happens when our city manager is not? So I, I think this is where we have an issue in establishing a precedent that could become the thin end of the wedge here. So. Maybe we should do our annual Black History Month resolution as the mayor stated. And talk about this programming a little bit more. We can still do it, you know, the first quarter, just maybe it's in March. Or maybe it's later in February, but. You know. Bring up tabling it again. But, but that might actually, that might actually be the way to go here so that we can sort through some of this and, and not do it right here, right now. Yeah, I don't know how everyone else feels about that, but. I, I think a little, maybe, maybe a little more discussion is appropriate first.
Is that a motion to table?
Because I think we're having two different conversations and I think actually council member Morgan said that originally. I would like to see it housed in the appropriate place. I would like to see it run by black people. Those are two different conversations. So I would like it housed in the city manager's. Arena where the communications director is involved, hands on the approach, how we get the word out, how, who collects the names of who's participating. So we have a record, like those kind of things, so that all of council can be abreast of what is happening, no matter who the council is. But as far as who is speaking at the virtual table, I expect that to be black people. So I don't know if I'm confused. We're talking in circles and I'm like, I think it sounds really clear to me, but I don't know.
Mayor Proten, that was my intention. No, no, I, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jones Chan.
Well, being that it's January twenty fifth, I think that we should. I think that we should move forward with our normal, I, I think the. I think Mrs. Richardson suggested that we remove the final part of the resolution, which would essentially make this. More or less our, our normal Black History Month resolution. I think that was the idea. And then we can discuss the, the actual event portion at a later time, so. I would move that we amend the resolution to. Remove the quarterly event language.
Support. It's been moved in second that we remove the quarterly, the last line of the resolution as it was amended. As it was read, Mr. Helengah, would you call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Soreville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries in.
Uh, Mayor Proten. Okay, now that we did that, um, I just need, I just have a clarifying question. So now that we did that and it's our original kind of what we've done in the past. Are we saying that we're going to vote on the resolution as it is now amended and then we will get. A new resolution or additional information at the next meeting or two meetings from now about what the program itself will look like? Just for clarification for all, because I know this has been very. Okay.
Yes. Okay. Can we vote on the resolution as amendment? Mr. Helengah, would you please call the roll?
On the amended resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero two zero, councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance? Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Soreville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries in.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Okay, next on the agenda.
Council, next on the agenda is a discussion regarding the proposed development at two twenty North Park, triggering the community benefits ordinance.
Yes, it is. Good evening, council. You received one of these letters a couple of months ago about the Clark Road development. But now the time has come when the two twenty North Park development has requested incentive. They've requested incentive for two point. Five million dollars for brownfield, for brownfield tax agreement financing. For the development and so. I don't know if anyone has any questions. The, the next step would be an interested council member, which, thank you, the council member Wilcoxen. Indicated to me that it is a, a member of that ward is required to step forward. To run the community participation meeting. And then once that is established, we can send out the required notices and go from there. So, does anyone have any questions?
We've nominated Annie Somerville. Annie Somerville and I. Annie Somerville and I has nominated her to be the chair of this meeting. Thank you.
I've accepted Anthony's suggestion to chair, be the interested council member.
No motion is required as long as there's a consensus. All right, if that's the case, I'll work with councilwoman Somerville. And get that scheduled for probably thirty days-ish from right now.
I guess I'd like to hear more about the. How the incentive works and, and, and what the, the programs that they're, they're asking for.
So the only program they're asking for is brownfield tax agreement financing. That can be paid for to clean up contamination, which there's a slight bit by the railroad. That can be used for infrastructure and site prep as well as a down payment assistance. So a, a big portion of the down payment assistance for this development would come from the tax agreement financing. Mechanism. So all of that will come through on the, on the brownfield plan, but it's kind of a chicken or an egg. Because council has to approve the. Tiff before it goes to the county brownfield, but we have to do this piece first. So the actual. Tiff tables that you will get when the brownfield incentive comes before council are in the process of being created, but they know that there's a. Two point five million dollar need in brownfield. And so this is going to come to council. Well, it's coming to council right now. And then it'll come back to council. It'll go through the county brownfield, but the city council has to approve it. Before the county board can approve it. And so we kind of work some things in tandem.
So we do the CBO now?
Yep.
We'll get the details on the Tiff at the next meeting?
No, it'll be at the, oh. It'll be when the county would approve or the city would approve the brownfield Tiff. So then the Tiff is going to be maximum two point five million dollars.
Okay, so I guess my sticking point here is. Knowing that timeline and what the details of that are. So like when you go to the CBO meeting. Not having that information. Will that be available at the time of the CBO meeting?
I, I believe, yes, it might not be in the exact brownfield plan, but yes, what they're using it for will be available at that meeting. If that makes sense, but it, it's, like I said, there's a lot of developments of moving part game.
Right.
And so we have to meet all of the necessary noticing requirements, sort of like that. So they already know what the two point five million dollars is programmed for. You don't know that, you just know that a two point five million dollar request is being made. That will be made available. The broad strokes will be made available at, at the community meeting. The details will be made available at the CBO meeting. It's a little bit weird because.
So when you're saying this, so the, the, the community meeting being the first meeting that Annie's going to chair?
Yes.
Okay, when the developer's there and they will.
Yes, then we will have, we'll have the, the broad strokes of the detail, the actual real, like, pieces of the.
When the committee is seated and they're meeting.
Yeah, because they request all the data.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
Yes, so I'm not super familiar with brownfield. All the time, so. Is there a way for, I mean, at least at the municipal level, is there a way for us to somehow limit or determine. On what the dollars are spent so that we can maximize the dollars that can go toward down payment assistance? Or is that, you know, statutory?
So. The, the incentive that's being requested. Is two point five million dollars. Now, there's only certain things that it can, so there's statutory things that it can be paid for. So we can't pay for. Acts if X isn't allowed by statute. So a, a part of this is the, is the. Infrastructure and the brownfield and the site prep. So then, yes.
Uh, I guess what I'm asking is there a way for us to limit some of those expenses? So given that there's a small portion of the site that is actually contaminated, is there a way? For us to limit some spending to that area so that. More of the available dollars, the two and a half million go towards down payment assistance. In other words, is there a way for us to maximize the down payment assistance? By making rules around how the money can be spent or what it can be spent on?
So the city has the authority to make any rule they choose. However, can I, can I, so however, there, there are certain assumptions that are, are certain assumptions that are made by the developer. In order to make this deal work. And so sometimes playing with those percentages could kill the deal. It's, it's council's role. It's council and city owned land at this point. So council can make any, any rule they want. However, the developer is requesting this incentive to get this product. That they know that they can do through their profile.
Okay, and then at the county level, how much control do they have over those terms or is that pretty much just between us and the developer? And they kind of make sure we're not doing anything egregious or how does that?
So the county, yeah, so the county looks for our approval, but the county brownfield redevelopment authority and county board have full say in this as well. Typically, the county board approves what we approve, typically. The one thing that's going to be. Weird on this is this is not the first time in the state, but probably one of the first five times. weird on this is this is not the first time in the state, but probably one of the first five times that down payment assistance program through TIF is being used. It's legal. There's lawyers that have signed off on it. But it is, it is a new program. And so it's a way that we can use our incentives to actually lower the cost of housing. So we've had presentations on it at the brownfield redevelopment authority and all, and all of those things, but this is a new tool.
All right, thanks. Yeah, I'd like to, for us to find a way to maximize that.
I mean, the, the only other thing I could do is, is, is go back to the developer and say, hey, it could, we put an extra half a million dollars and make it a $3 million TIF, actually get even more down payment assistance if that's, if that's council's prerogative. They were trying to, to leverage it and also have the city collect taxes as quickly as possible while still meeting the 50% objective of 50% of the use going to 40 to 120% AMI.
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak for everyone, but I think we all be, I mean, maybe willing to give up a little revenue in order to, to, you know, give more folks a chance to look somewhere.
I could get some quick thumbs up on that. I could, I could take it back to the developer. See two, three, four, okay. I'll, I'll talk to, I, I will talk to, they, they, I, look, they're, the thing about this development, and I want to be very clear, is this development is was pitched by the city, in a sense. You know, they come, they come to us saying what we have, but we pitched this to them. You know, the density has come down to, to make some of the infrastructure improvements. You will all see the site plan very soon. I'll be reaching out to each one of you. It's, there's not alleys, which is unfortunate. However, they had to get rid of the alleys to make sure that the stormwater was taken care of, because we don't want the site to flood. And so the civil engineer kind of pulled away the alleys, which really stunk. It really did. But this is about 42 units right now instead of 56. So hopefully that'll make some of the density concerns, but really this was the most number of units they could get on this site with the civil engineering. So once again, we're, we're working real hard on it. It's, it's something that's gonna come very soon. At your next meeting, they are, they have spoken about changing the entity back when we did the option to buy. And so they are gonna actually have that changed to its run of Ypsilanti. I'll, I'll see, it's the same ownership. But they're gonna have that, so the option is to them. Yes.
The CBO is a, is a mechanism for checks and balances for developers. It's like, it's not an oversight for citizens to, to say, you know what, we don't want this. So there's no way that citizens can, citizens can push the developers out of this if there's something that they don't want. Is it?
The, the citizens can't push the developers out. The citizens need to make the city council know their objections.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the estimation of the 2.5 million?
Yep.
How much do they know about the contamination? So they've already done the studies.
Yep.
They know exactly where it is. They have an estimate on how much that's gonna take to clean up.
Yep.
Can we know that?
Yes, I'll get that out to you. I don't have that on me today.
Because this speaks to Mr. Jones Chan's questions, like out of the 2.5 million, how much is going to the down payment assistance versus how much is going to the, the engineering and the remediation?
So the, 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 the infrastructure is, is a big piece, but the down payment assistance is also a big piece. I don't have the exact breakout, because I said I need to get the final incentive to get to you to request it, so then we can have the 30 days to actually create the rest of the reports.
So in your estimation, so when you said that this was pitched to them, the, the incentive was pitched to them or the development was pitched?
The site was pitched to them. They created the development.
Yeah, and so they came up with the 2.5 million number, not you?
Correct.
All right. And that accounts for, I guess I'd like to know whether that's a 50/50 or?
Yeah, I, 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 those numbers will all come out in the next month, I assure you. Like I said, the, the goal was to get the total amount while we're working through it, because we know it won't exceed that. The, um, a, a big part is the infrastructure. It is. But also with the brownfield, there is still a $2.5 million gap in the development. So before that happens, they have to receive those fundings. And so we're working with the state right now to actually obtain those funding so they can keep these units at the 140 to $220,000 range. So the state has plenty of money right now that, that is going towards projects like this. But we're working with our lobbyists and our state senator and our state House, House member to actually allocate the funding to this, because they believe it's a great project as well.
I guess the other question I have is, is what is the, how does that 2.5 million relate to the tax capture that they would have? I mean, in terms of years or?
So at this point, it's all questionable, because the assessor can make some assumptions. And, and, and we can, we had calculated out the, the amount of capture based on 56 units. We're in the process of recalculating it for 42. My guess is this development will bring in 250 to $400,000 a year in taxes for all of these units. And so it would probably be less than 10 years of, of tax capture. But that doesn't include our bond payments and things like that. So brownfield TIF only takes certain chunks of the pie. It can't cover, it can't take some of the other chunks of the pie. So once again, it's, it's lots of moving parts. It's, as you know, now working with the Clark Road, there's a lot of moving parts going on at every, any given time. But we will have a lot of these answers moving forward.
I just got a question that exactly how much is this going to cost the city? Someone just sent me a text.
Okay, so how much is it gonna cost the city, like, their, like, how much are we have to pay to get this developed? Or like, how much is it gonna cost us in lost tax capture over many years?
With the incent, for the incentive and all the, the whole development, how much is it going to right now?
Right, right now, this will cost the city nothing. And, and actually, the city will receive at least the $250,000 that's been assessed by, by the city assessor for this purpose. So the city will actually make money on this development.
Thank you.
I, I also have no problem talking to any council member offline if they want, because I, there's a lot of questions, a lot of things going on. So you all know that I, you can reach me pretty easily.
Any other questions or discussion for Mr. Myers? Oh, this is a question, oh, did you have?
I guess, when are we scheduling this?
I will work with you on your availability this week.
For, this is a question for the Ward Three. Representative, you two decide who would host the meetings? You're going to? Okay, thank you. All right, and when will that? Okay. All right, so Mr. Myers, if it's a 30 days notice, do the, does the council member decide on the date or how is that decided? Do they work with you to decide the date?
We'll work a date out roughly 30 days from after today, after we can get the noticing out. And so usually it takes three to five days to actually get that out. I know the last mailing, we had to actually go drive around and survey apartment numbers. This one shouldn't be as hard, because it's not by four major apartment complexes in the city. This should actually be a pretty simple pull off of BSN A and, and go to it, but it might hit Depot Town, which just takes a little bit of extra time. So my guess is within three to five days, we could probably get the mailing out. And so it'll be 35 days, depending on Councilman Somerville's schedule. And when we can get those notices out. And so there's kind of a moving target. It's a probably beginning of March, just looking at it, because February is also a short month. So.
Yeah, I was just gonna say the timeline goes into play when we choose the date. We just have to give at least 30 days notice.
At least 30 days, but we also want to keep things going, because this is, we all know that there's a, a lack of housing in the city. And so we want to get this rolling.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other further discussion on this discussion item? Okay, see now, I think that brings us to, is that it, Mr. Heleng? We do have.
Counselors.
We have, we have two reappointments.
Yes, counsel, there's two nominations for reappointment to the border review. And then just a reminder, please provide your council proposed business to me in writing prior to next meeting on the first, so I can include it in the packet. And then those remarks will be also incorporated into the minutes of that meeting. So please, just in the, the future, in order to maintain shorter meetings, as is the desire with the COVID numbers being higher, please just submit those mean email to include in the packet.
All right, thank you. See, no hand. Mr. Morgan, I will grant you the privilege of our final motion for the evening.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Support.
It's been moved and supported all in favor.
Thank you, Dr. Miller, for being here. Appreciate you. Clerk Heleng, you're one of the best clerks in, in the, like, if there's a municipal Hall of Fame, bro.